Supervisor of the township will now come to your twenty eighth, August 28, 2013. We will stand for pledge allegiance for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please receive. Okay. I have a request from Solicitor Wyger to be out of here in a couple of minutes or eight. He has another meeting to go to this evening. And at this time, I would like to bring our Solicitor's report before us for what he has at present time.
We have a couple of matters. One is on the agenda. There are several that aren't. The first one has to do with the demolition permit. There was a demolition permit, as I understand it, applied for and granted. And it's my understanding that the expiration of that demolition permit occurs on the 26th of September. Apparently, the police posted the property notifying the landowners that they had until the 26th of September. I would recommend that we notify the landowners in writing with proof of service on them that they have until the 26th to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. The actual provisions of the ordinance require that the owner receive due notice. And if he refuses thereafter to comply with the terms of the ordinance, he can be charged with and found guilty of a summary offense and/or the township may direct the removal of the demolished items. And he can be charged with the cost plus a 10 percent penalty. And we can take such other action as deemed appropriate. But we have to be sure that the owner receives due notice. I appreciate the police giving one form of notice. I think that's helpful. But I think we should have a letter sent indicating that by the 26th, they must comply or else they face a penalty in the form of summary conviction and/or removal with costs to be incurred by them and/or such other legal means empowering empowered in the ordinance for the township to undertake. And I'm not sure who the owners are or if we have a way of serving them. But we should serve them with whatever notice, whether it be certified mail. Or if we know where the owners are, having the letter served upon them. But we should do that to be safe.
Okay. I heard Richard's comments on that. What is the wish of the board to follow up with that? Send a certified letter to put that in?
I'll soon move.
Okay. Second, all those with favor give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
Something that's not on the agenda that has been the subject of, I think, some peripheral discussions. I was contacted, I believe, Monday or Tuesday this week telephonically. There are two different areas that may require the board's attention. One has to do with the cable franchise issue. I know we've talked about this and we've kicked this around for years, if not decades. There's a law firm named the Cohen Law Group out of Pittsburgh that specializes in drafting appropriate ordinances and franchise agreements and also specializes in assisting townships in collecting the fees, et cetera, et cetera. They forwarded a letter, I believe, to the chairman of the board back in June and submitted a proposal, which is here. And I would commend it to you folks for your review. The second issue along with this same group has to do with the age of wireless technology and the protection the township may need in terms of the appropriate ordinances, the appropriate agreements with various providers. And that group likewise does that and provided a proposal that I would commend to the board for review. There's no time limitation within which to respond. But I do know that one of the proposals, as it relates to at least franchise fees, provides a fairly significant amount of money coming to the township if the township's interested engaging in that service. It's tens of thousands of dollars. Of course, we've in the past have assumed and kicked around the concept that fees would be passed on to users. That's par for the course in any kind of service. But one of the profiles that this group put together simply indicated that if we had a 2 percent franchise fee, that would generate approximately $13,000 a year. 3 percent's 20, 4 percent's 27. There's a chart here. So I would commend to the board each of these two areas for your review. And perhaps, if you haven't done so, maybe make a decision by the September meeting, if at all reasonably possible. Have you folks seen all this?
I've seen that. I've made copies. Got the brown. I haven't seen that. Just some of that just arrived.
What I'll do is I will give each of the two proposals to handle along with the anticipated cost. I'm sorry, anticipated fee structure, the fees that the township would receive if they had a franchise tax, for her to make copies to distribute to the various board members. And I believe that covers what was...
That's for you to look over.
Yeah, I had... Yeah, I think you had sent this to me before, did you not?
Yes. That's the third AOR language for the one property.
Well, that's... Yeah. And from the standpoint of the proposed language is acceptable. But the real question is, is the township willing to get into this kind of situation where private streets, et cetera, et cetera, are going to be approved? That's up to them. But the language is okay if they want to do it.
All right.
Anything else, Richard?
I think that covers my items on the agenda.
Okay. And lieu of him leaving, you're going to be here for a little bit. This next item may take some of your input. This time, I recognize Charles Stoner and Randy Valando.
We have an Incan Eve proposal that we'd like to build a single-family home on or self designed. We'd like to build a single-family home on, but we're running into problems getting the approval to do that. And wondering for his ways or what we can do to resolve that, or if we can request for a waiver on the three lot thing, or a little case maybe. I'm just looking for a solution.
I'm going to speak up on that. I've spent here and spent a whole day. We'll clear back to the originality of this thing when this plan was started, clear back in 2000 until finally got signed in 2001. First off, I don't believe there's anybody here that could show me that the 50-foot right-of-way we showed on the plan is really a 50-foot right-of-way there. And even the two lots that are there. I went up and took the original recording on that road out there. We have it here. I would urge anybody to come in. If you want to hassle all night, we can hassle all night. But I recommend you come in and sit down and take a look at it and read everything about it in regards to that. You do have a 33-foot there. Township Road, Rook Road, does not currently go around the bend. And the plan indicates that it was supposed to be upgraded and dedicated and would be a township road at the end of that. None of those fulfillments that's on that plan that was agreed upon have ever been fulfilled. No dedicator statement, no right-of-way agreement or maintenance agreement on the 20-foot that you have there for the... We have none of that. And we have no reason to believe that it was ever followed through with. Now, the plan shows 50-foot, but someone has to show me. And I've talked to the neighbors because when I paved Rook Road, nobody tried any harder than to want to pave around that corner at that time. And we said, from your office, I did at your request, with Chuck's attorney, with Mr. Wyger down in Harrisburg, and hassled this whole thing out before. If there is no 50-foot right-of-way, as it showed was on the plan and it isn't there, then you built two lots into a place where there's not even a 50-foot requirement, where there is a 50-foot requirement. Those issues had to be settled. I wasn't here. I didn't sign the plan. I inherited this. I've done as much as I possibly can. But I've sat here. I have the plan. I have all the minutes. I have everything. It was discussed. I have Ratu's comments the whole way through in this from the day one. And there's an awful lot that maybe you ought to sit down and take a look at and realize what all took place that leads up to where you're at and the problems you've got right now. And at that, Rich is well aware of it. I think we thought the issue was resolved. The day that you met in your office, I gave up a day and went down and sat there and listened. I think we walked away from the same thing where we are now. It's a problem that I don't know how to resolve for you. And just because the house is vacant, somebody else wants to buy that. It shows that they use that. It shows that that's a 33-foot public road. And I just don't see how we can go in and tell them if they can't use it to open that road up for somebody else that they can't use it. And I mean, that seemed to be the request. Because they got access to their property elsewhere, we don't want them to use that. You've got to do something here to keep them out of there. I'm not sure we can do that. Or we should involve ourselves with that. There's a paved lot there. There's a paved pool off there, a paved pool. They used it. And if the new owner buys it, I'm sure he's going to want to use the same. So I don't know where to go with it. At that, I'll ask Richard's offer, comment on it. He was involved with it, sat with Charlie Cook, Chuck's lawyer, and you down in Harrisburg in his office.
My recollection, my age is not as good as yours. But I believe it's a question of we already have a private right-of-way and we have the maximum number of lots off of that private right-of-way. And now there's a request to add an additional lot? Is that basically what we're talking about?
That's correct.
But the road that is being used, while it shows on the plan as a right-of-way, was never dedicated to the township.
And also, Rich, the first portion to get to the existing lots goes over Mr. Benner's ground. And nobody can show me or nobody can show me or nowhere do we have anything here says that there's even 50-foot to get back to the first two lots that Chuck subdivided. We have 33, but we don't have that 50-foot requirement that I can find anywhere. And I've looked at it as hard as I can. How long went up? We pulled the original deed. We pulled the original docket as to where the survey is to how far Rook Road goes, the exact valleys and everything. And I was out there and put up an end-to-t township road out there. And if you sit down and take a look at the plan and all the discussion on the pole removal, I can't see where or how we've got a 50-foot right-of-way when in there. When the neighbor says you don't. And he's not going to give any. And so we got two lots already there. If you don't have it, where a requirement is to 50-foot to get in though. Although the plan said when they signed it that we agreed to all the conditions that was put on the plan. And those conditions have never been met. I've sat down with anybody and go through that page by page. I tagged all the correspondence, everything where it came back until the plan was complete and signed. And when I came here in 2004, they were still arguing about the plan not being completed. And that showed up in the minutes. And so the last I got involved with was I wanted to pave that. People want to know why I didn't pave it or could I pave it. And there was no way that I could pave that around there. If I could, if I would have paved Rook around there, it hadn't been Township Road. But that was a dirt section road. It would have to be improved by the developer and turned over to the township, like everywhere else. It's no different than the other development that Chuck has at present time. He's building houses on it and rightfully so. But if he never turns around and decides to dedicate it to the township, it will never be a township road. He has to put it in that improved condition according to the plan. He has to dedicate to us and make applications. And it will be turned over to a township road then at that time. And if that's never done, it never will be a township road that we can't make it one.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, Charlie.
I have the 1973 plan in my hand and I have Mr. Benner's deed. His deed reads to the what is drawn on this plan as a legal right-of-way line, which has already turned the corner. And that's what created this whole problem to begin with. When I came in here in 2001 with the plan for Mr. Stoner, our research indicated that Rook Road never turned the corner by way of a recorded road docket up in the courthouse, which is also on file at PennDOT in their liquid fuels log in the maintenance department. So Mr. Benner's deed reads to a legal right-of-way line. Are you saying that your road never made the corner? Yet Mr. Benner's lot, which was approved in 1973, shows it borders on a public road that was 33-foot wide.
That's correct.
Whether it was dirt or macadam, I don't think matters. If the road never turned the corner, then Mr. Benner's lot never had road frontage on a public road. And there's where we were in 2001.
Public road.
Now, I realize you weren't a supervisor. There's two, three people in this room who actually were at the meeting.
He turned it on to a public road but not a township road. Mr. Benner's lot was joined a public road, which is open to the public, but not deeded or ever dedicated to township, Charlie.
Okay. I can understand that. But the point I'm trying to make is, when we were at the meeting, the supervisors made the decision that the smartest thing to do was to make that a public road so Mr. Benner's lot was legal. Otherwise, his lot did not meet the ordinances. That's why that note was put on the plan. It was the end of the public road. Then we put private road from there.
Okay. And so now you need 33-foot. And that's set all those years. Things change. You need 50-foot. Now, to get 50-foot back to the next two lots, you need 50-foot, which is where I can't find where you have.
Well, we have a private road into the district.
Now, you would get back there, you would need a 50-foot.
You just told me that it was 20. I mean, you weren't...
No. What's that?
I'm not too much interested in that. I'm just interested in knowing... When we were at the meeting in 2001, it was very clear that the township road never turned the corner.
Correct.
That was already a form of information.
Well, your plan shows...
Obviously, the 73 plan, the supervisors didn't know that. They showed the road going clean up over the top of the hill. And that's what was my question in 2001.
If the road, and you admit, never turned the corner, then why does it say on the plan end-to-t township road here with an arrow there?
The supervisors told me to put that on the plan because the Mr. Benner's deed was already written as fronting on a public road. And if I'd been a supervisor, I would have done the same thing. So the road on my plan and the deal was, and I'm going to be honest with you, there was never any talk on any meeting that I went to in 2001 up to August where there was ever a condition that the road had to be brought to public status. The hang-up on the plan was who was going to move the pole. And that took three months of negotiations. And the conditions were, as my memory serves, two. Number one, he had to pay for all the fees. And the other condition was that he was responsible to move the pole. And that's the way it was left. I don't ever remember, ever remember any discussion at all about that little piece of corner being brought up to public states by anybody, whether it be the township or Mr. Stone.
But then it should show that it was going to be Township Road or the premonition it would be Township Road. And it should, and the plan should have never shown that there's a 50-foot right-of-way in there.
It was offered. I agree. We went over this at the lawyer meeting with Mr. Bragg.
That's correct.
It was offered, but never officially taken over by the township. Neither... There was a 50-foot right-of-way offer in the 73 plan, but it was never taken by the township. That happens all the time. But the word it says that you need to dedicate the additional right-of-way, and it was offered for dedication, but never taken by the township in 73 and obviously never taken by the township in 2001.
We don't have that.
Wait one second. When was it offered?
The offer of dedication of additional right-of-way on the 73 plan, which made it a 50-foot right-of-way along Benner.
To do that, you have to have an official deed proposed on an eight and a half...
That's what I'm saying. It never happened, Rich.
Great.
But the plan offered it, just like my plan offered it in 2001. Neither of which was ever taken over.
We're both on the same page. I just don't want to create confusion. When a plan says that a particular right-of-way exists and it is to be offered or dedicated for public use, and it's approved and recorded, then the next step is the developer or landowner is obligated to, A, bring it up to township specifications under the ordinance, and then B, under both the municipality's planning code, and the second-class township is required to offer for dedication by way of a deed, a resolution, an eight and a half by 11 plan attached and propose to the township. The township then accepts that and records it in the courthouse. If the developer never takes the step in giving the deed, together with the resolution, together with the eight and a half by 11 plan, then a township has, A, no obligation or any wherewithal to accept the dedication. Their incomes throughout this county and lots of counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, properties that have roads that are laid out and never dedicated. Sometimes they're laid out...
I understand that, Rich.
Yeah. Sometimes they're laid out and never used.
My question is simple. Is... You acknowledge that there's a 33-foot right-of-way along Benner's lot. Am I correct or am I incorrect on that?
That's what that original recording shows. There's only 33 there.
Okay. Well, if there's a 33-foot right-of-way, my plan did nothing but request a private road up to the lots that we created. A private road, not a public road, a private road.
Okay. But that requirement requires 50-foot, which you show, but you can't, nobody can show me the 50-foot there.
Actually, it was 60, because that's what your deed called for at that time.
Oh, I don't believe so. But in 2001, maybe did. But let me put it to you this way, Charlie. This is exactly no different than the cell tower set back on there and a 33-foot private right-of-way going into my place. And before they could even approve the plan for the cell tower, it had to be given 50, just to get to it. No house, no nothing, just to get to the house. And so you're going to have a lot back there. The requirement is 50-foot. There's no 50-foot there, Charlie.
We can't... We offered a 60-foot wide right-of-way, private road for dedication on this plan, 60-foot wide. Because I believe back then, that was...
How do you take another man's ground and say it's part of that right-of-way?
We didn't take anybody's land.
But how... If he don't want the right-of-way on his ground, how are you just going to say, well, we're going to put it in there? You asked for it, but it's on somebody else's ground.
We did not draw the line on Mr. Benner's land. The only place it's 60 is on Mr. Stoner's property. I get the plan right in my hand. And here it is. We never touched anything on Benner. He already had an approved lot.
The pole and everything is relocated.
The pole is on the inside that area that you're talking about.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about, we have no encroachment on any private property. The only thing we did over that road is on Mr. Stoner's property.
The pole, where's the pole set? Whose property's pole on?
The pole is inside that 33-foot legal right-of-way as shown on a 1973 plan.
Okay. And then to relocate it any farther, you're putting it over Mr. Benner's. And that seems to be the problem, to relocate it where it's supposed to be. And that's...
I don't know anything about where the pole was going to be relocated. That wasn't my problem as a surveyor. All I know is, when I attended the meetings, that was the hang-up on the plan. Who was going to be responsible to move the pole? And as my memory serves, the ultimate condition of approval was that it was going to be the developer's responsibility. Now, where he moved the pole was not discussed at the meeting. We just knew that it had to go off of the 33-foot right-of-way.
Boils down one thing. You've got 33-foot and you don't have 50 that anybody ever said, by golly, that they agreed to give it a portion of it to make it 50.
All I'm telling you is, is it was offered for dedication and drawn on the plan. However...
Never offered for... Charlie, there's...
I know what you're saying. Mr. Benner's deed...
Don't use that phrase because you're creating that false impression.
Well, Mr. Benner's deed does read to the legal right-of-way line that was shown turning the corner in 73.
But no one offered, no one came to the township and said, here is a deed for a right-of-way. It was not been offered.
I just want clarification that you are now admitting that the Township Road, 33-foot wide, does turn the corner.
No, it doesn't.
You just said that.
No, it doesn't. A public road, not township road, Charlie. A public road, which says it's 33-foot with a 20-foot cartway. It's on your plans, your design, 20 feet, which says you'll maintain it out to the Township Road. Look at the plan.
Mr. Benner's deed says that his frontage is along T-350.
20-foot, you claim. A dirt gravel road...
That's all I wanted to say. I'm done.
...and come out the Township Road. I'll show you the Township Road docket or the original deed, the original drawing recorded.
I don't want to break your heart. The township didn't even know that docket existed till I brought it in here in 2001. They had no clue. I know what the docket says. I measured it.
Yeah. And so it did go around the corner as shown on the drawing.
That's right.
And...
But the township realized that Mr. Benner's lot didn't have any frontage on a public road. Now, what were they going to do about that?
So there's a public road around the corner that becomes a problem that everybody could use at one time if it was a public road. If nobody wanted it, it was not a township road. If they wanted to say it was public, it was public. But we can't, we couldn't upgrade it. We can't plow it. We can't do nothing with it. And now you've got to say it's a public road, 33 feet. You need 50-foot to get back in there.
All right. I'll accept the public road. I mean, I just, at the time that I last was at this meeting, you were not acknowledging that you had any involvement past the limit of the road docket. But now you're telling me that you don't have a township road, but there's a public road that goes around the corner?
Well, the phraseology, public, if I own a piece of property and I put a right-of-way across it and say, public can use it, I can do that.
Yeah.
But if I never improve it and dedicate it, it still is a right-of-way that the public can use, but the municipality doesn't have to maintain it.
I understand that, Rich.
And I think that's where we're at.
My question's been answered.
I've done my best, Charlie, to pave it and to make it over there, but I was on somebody else's property to do it.
Well, all I can tell you is, Henry, the discussions that happened back in 2001, I don't think you have the right way it went. Because there was a lot of talk about the corner, believe me.
I have everything in there. I'll be glad to sit down and let everybody...
I'm just telling you, I was there personally. I have all Max's comments. There was not one thing ever said about the road being built to public states. The pole was a major problem.
Yes.
It took three months to get the plan approved because of it. From April, actually more, I think it was August, when we finally got it set to the point where the supervisors were willing to sign a plan contingent on the developer moving the pole.
That's correct. And then put the plan set.
But I never had any, there was never any discussion of him building a road to public states.
And then it comes to where the pole is, just whose grounds that pole on if we agreed to move.
Well, that's plotted accurately on my plan. So you can see right away whose lay plan it's on.
You know. So that's the problem.
It's actually on, if you want to get technical, it's actually on his own land.
They require everybody else to have 50-foot right-of-way to get in anywhere all over the township, do we not, Max?
I'm sorry?
Yes. And so here we have it. We've got two lots built back there, all public, where it's proven that you don't have a 50-foot right-of-way. And...
But we have a private road, Henry.
What's that?
It's a proved private road. It's a private road. It's not a public road, a private road.
Okay. Well, mine was private for one house and I had to give 50-foot. Kenny Almberger has private to his place. He had to give 50-foot. Private road, one one house.
We don't give the 50-foot when it's private. It's actually conveyed to the property owners. But there was supposed to be a maintenance agreement written.
Yes. And all that stuff off it was never...
But I'm saying it's a private road. It's not a public road. It's a private road from the point where we're up to the lots.
And so it allowed three lots off a private road.
As far as I'm concerned, there is three lots off a private road.
Yeah, there is. That's how...
I don't remember a driveway coming out there when I did the survey. There may be one there now, but I don't remember one when I did the survey.
And the paved aprons there and everything, and those people have used that. They've come around there and used that road for as long as I can remember in that house.
Well, a lot of people use the road. I used to run hay up over Floyd's fields, along and down to Grange Hall and put it on the ball's bar.
I'll be glad to sit down with anybody all the time they want to take a look at that. Anytime you want.
You can answer my question. That's all I would ask.
Yes, Charlie?
Regarding the pole, I never verbally agreed, and it's not on the plan, that I had to move that pole. I said, that's not my responsibility. That is in the middle of a township road.
No, it's not.
Now, wait a minute, Henry.
It's not.
Now, wait a minute. That plan shows the township road turning right. Pole situated there. I said, that's like me going out in faculty road and repairing puddles. Not my responsibility. Then I find out through PPNL, they can't move it because they can't get the right-of-ways for the guy wires and the service over to Mullins.
And Charlie just admitted that he knew when he done the plan that the Township Road did not turn the corner. did not turn the corner. He just said that.
Well, the times that I mentioned, not one person on that board said, that's not a township road, that's your responsibility to move that pole.
But your plan even indicates it's private, that it's the twenty-foot coming out to meet the township road, and you will have a maintenance agreement on it, Chuck. It's on your plan that you signed and agreed to.
And we have a, we have a maintenance agreement on the plan that was.
No, that.
Available to every person that bought a lot, that they had to help maintain that road, because it was three lots.
Okay, and you drew up a document for that?
It's right on the plan.
Okay, that's what it said, there was a maintenance.
One other thing, Henry.
Yes.
Regarding the old farmhouse.
Mm-hmm.
That house has been vacant for quite a long time.
Mm-hmm.
The weeds are dead high. I have pictures of it around the house. It hasn't been occupied, and the boy, they can't afford to pay the taxes.
Mm-hmm.
The boy said he was going to buy it, and he was going to repair it and rent it out.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's no township official that would give him a building permit because of the structural changes that he had to make. I, I wanted to buy it when Mullins had it up for sale, because, and I told him right up front, I want to tear it down. I took a screwdriver, went down in, in the cellar, not a basement, took a screwdriver, ran it right up through those beams, as the old wall, ran it right up through. They're not going to get a permit to, to, to repair that, and, and she said she wanted to rent it out.
Okay, Chuck, let me tell you something about getting a permit to repair that, that may be your case. Well, I don't know where it's at, but my old farmhouse is sitting there burned out. It's covered up, I pay taxes on it, I don't live in it, and I've had the UCC code inspectors said in there, yes, it's repairable, I can fix it, and if places in there, you'll fall through the floor at the present time. I intend to do that. I had a permit for it one time, and then there was some litigation came against me, and that stopped all that. I, I couldn't move forward, couldn't do nothing. But that old farmhouse sitting there is still going to be built, and the UCC code says I can do it. So anybody who wants to come in and meet the compliance of what's in that building with the UC code, Chuck, will be able to do it if they so choose. It's not a township official that's going to say that, it's a uniform construction code that we don't have no choice but to deal with, Chuck.
Someone's going to have to give the approval to prepare that.
The UCC code people will have to do it. He'll make a permit, he'll submit what he's going to do, and they'll have to take a look at it, and they'll give approval if he meets the requirements.
Well, number one, he doesn't have the money to do anything.
Well, I, I don't know that, and, and, and what if they sell it, somebody else buys it and wants to, Chuck? They have the same rights, those rights are going to transfer with the deed of ownership.
We're not telling them that they can't use that anymore. If the township grants a waiver, that's not telling them that they can't use that if they want to down the line somewhere. The guy that was talking about buying it, the boy, he said, I don't want to use that side. I always come in the other side. They have over three hundred feet of frontage on that road that they can use. So that's what it stands on the old farmhouse.
Yes, I'm sorry, I took up so much of everyone's time for this. I come into this in two thousand and ten, and we brought it within understanding that we could build a single-family house on eighteen acres, which I didn't think would be a problem, but.
Did we tell you that?
No, as, as you see though, there is a problem, and it doesn't appear like something that can be resolved, and I'm sorry I took up everyone's time for that, but that's, we were just looking for a, a solution, since I come in after all this stuff already happened and, and bought the place, and just seeing if there was a solution to the problem. That, that's all. I didn't know what to give you, it was a lengthy discussion, sorry.
Well, I would welcome you to come in and sit down, take a look.
Well, I think I understand everything, but it's not a solution.
You know, I'd be glad to, if you take a look at the history and what led up to it, and how long it took to get that plan approved, and subject to the greater of the conditions that had to be met to get it approved, I think you'll understand where, where we're sitting out here at the township. I've tried everything I could, but the, the, the matter is nothing, nothing that I don't see, whether the fifty foot right-of-way, it's not a township road, it turns a corner. And, and until the neighbors sit down and come to some kind of agreement out there and work something out, you'll be able to maybe do something up there. Until then, I can't force them, I can't club them to death, I can't do anything to make them comply. That's something the guys will have to work on.
Well, that went twelve years with no problems, and then all of a sudden.
No, it's only.
All these things come up.
Oh, because you sold it, Chuck, and the man thinks he can build up there.
Well, we got a building permit to build up there. It was a, it was a pole building that we put up up there. And in addition to that, almost half of it now is zoned residential, it was all ag. That was supposed to be kept as ag, but the township zoned it half, almost half of it agricultural, uh, residential, lower density. So that changed, but I appreciate your time. I didn't have any to pick up that.
Thank you.
Pole barn, yes.
Huh?
She's looking at me. He did get a pole barn permit back before zoning, as part of the airport.
But that was not a house.
No.
And that was all part of one parcel then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes.
So the solution is if that road is brought up to township specs, improved, dedicated, and accepted, then they can have as many lots off.
Fine, have as many lots as they want, that's all we've got to do.
Yes, that's the solution.
You've got to get the fifty foot, you've got to get that fifty foot.
Fifty foot's not there.
You've got to get fifty foot right-of-way in there somehow.
That's the solution.
If you can buy ground off of your neighbor there to get a fifty foot right-of-way in there, well, you're home free. Believe me, I, I looked at this thing, I have to tell you, I spent days in here, look at this, trying to find a solution. I even sent you a letter when I thought the solution was, didn't I? And our recommendation was to work with the neighbor to try down and out.
Right.
You asked me for help, and you asked me what I felt the solution was, and I wrote you a letter back, a very nice letter, that your problem lies out there, you need to work it out with the neighbors, if you can get something with the neighbors out there, and everybody can come to agree, you've got something. And that's the solution, I see. There is an emperor to it, but you guys are going to have to make an effort to do that. I can't do that, and we can't force nobody to do it.
So it sounds like you're saying you need fifty foot somehow, and you also need someone not to use the lane at all?
Well, if it's going to be fifty foot private, you've got to have to get, you've got three on it now, so that's, that's your problem that you have there. By rights, if there is a fifty foot there, there shouldn't be those other two houses back in there off of that subdivision plan legally, because we don't, we don't, we don't grant thirty-three-foot right-of-ways anymore going in. Haven't for years, nowhere. It was going into my private home, like I said, when they put the cell tower in, I had an increase of fifty foot, or no cell tower. I ordered half, I ordered, Rich, why did I, what, I bought a shape for two hours in here that I wasn't going to give fifty foot right-of-way? And the pole went, been there itself now.
Have you repealed the twenty-foot wide private road ordinance? Has that been repealed? About eight years ago, you, you changed from fifty to twenty, twenty-foot right-of-way for the lots. Has that been changed again?
Don't think so.
It used to be a minimum of fifty for years, then it went to sixty, and then John Tasker plugged, plugged away and got it finally written up for twenty, and I believe that it was approved.
Private lanes, thirty feet.
Thirty feet for private lanes.
Without curves, with curves, it was up to there.
Okay, so it was changed to thirty now.
With, yeah, without curves was for thirty, fifty with curves for private.
Private road, serving three lots, thirty-foot wide.
Yeah.
Okay, so it must have changed since I was up there last. It used to be twenty.
Okay. Anybody who wants to come in and sit down, I'll give you the time. I've represented the region board once, and take a look at the plan in detail, and I'll point anything out to you if you want to see it. It's conflicting with confusion, I agree.
So is that saying it don't have to be fifty, it can be thirty?
For private.
Is that what I'm hearing?
If it's, it, thirty feet private, but then you can only have three lots off of a private street.
That's what this is, isn't it? Yep.
Three lots.
My whole house, I never knew that was a town. That's not a part of the subdivision.
Remember, you've got the left, probably first, that's that really. You're saying the public road is all I want, you can stop it. You're usually making private, one minute you're saying public, next that it was saying private.
Public road.
Mine is straight.
That's a street.
And that, that one it got back to your ground, you're correct, but it got to your ground.
Three lots or units on a private road.
But to get to your ground is where you're going to have.
There are three lots using that private road. He would be number four.
So you had a name on it?
I'm sorry, there's three lots using that private road right now. Yeah. And then if Mr. Malatinoff builds, that would be number four. No?
No, that old farmhouse is not part of the subdivision.
But it's still on the private road?
Yeah, it's still served off of that private road. Your plan showed it.
But they used to run rail for Rupp Road, they got about three hundred feet of private on Rupp Road, and they do use it now.
Well, I took a look out there the other day, Chuck, their motorhome and everything, had to come around the corner because they couldn't put it in the other road. They always used the cars around there. Those same people lived there, complained about the brush and stuff around the corner, which you trimmed it down. He used to live there several times, and everybody has used that road, and your plan indicates it's paved, and there's a parking lot there that's paved, it shows it. And so you can't, you can't hardly say that they didn't use it, or granted that there, that house is not part of your subdivision, no, it's something that joined the, it's no different than the road to get down here, and it's property on one side of the road and property on the other side of the road. The road becomes a dividing lot, and that's what you have, you have two properties up there on the right, two separate properties to get up to join where, where Mr. Malatinoff wants to build. And so that isn't part of your, your subdivision, you're correct, you're putting two houses off the subdivisions, and, and these people also serve off of that same road, that becomes a problem. Okay?
Thank you very much.
I have one other question, if anybody else has any further questions for Solicitor Wineson before he leaves. If they are, ask them now.
Thank you, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, um, Rich? Did you, did they ask about what is the status of the DeBerk and, and Morrison conditional use before the court?
It's in, it's still in the court, we don't have a decision yet.
No decision yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Yeah, thanks, Charlie. Okay, Denise Chilby.
She's not here.
Not here, okay.
Mrs. Gauss.
Nothing.
Mr. Gauss.
Nothing.
Uh, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, yes. I, uh, the township, I believe, if I'm correct, owns a lot of land, thirteen twenty-seven State Road. There was a structure there that was torn down last year, that a tree had fell on. And I, I just wondered if they had any interest in selling that. I was hoping possibly build a garage there, and that's, I don't know if there's enough room to do there or not, but the first question would be whether or not they would be open to selling. If not, then it doesn't matter whether it was bigger or not.
Well, you really talked to me today, the size of your garage, I don't believe will fit in there with the setbacks. And then your garage would be, it's going to fall underneath from, from zoning, which we mentioned to you, it's going to be considered accessory, which wouldn't be allowed. So those two items there, I'm not trying to shoot you down before that, but I haven't heard any interest from the board or myself at the present time to have any interest at the time to part with that lot, unless, unless Brian and Cece would wish to make that motion or et cetera. At the present time, I believe that we'd wish to retain the lot. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pickle.
No.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob?
No, I'm, we'll see what happens next.
Jesse?
Yes, I was wondering, with the anticipation of them repairing the bridge at the end of Duncan and Market Street, if some consideration could be given to lowering, lowering the speed limit on Butcher Shop Road and Creek Road. I travel those roads pretty often, and there's people riding bikes in there, there's people jogging and walking along there, with the curves on both of those roads, if you go forty mile an hour, it's pretty tough to come, when you come upon someone, to see them quickly. I just wondered if there might be some consideration given to lowering the speed limit on those two roads.
Okay, I guess a little bit to answer you just, in the meetings that we had with them down here, they're going to put some lines down there, they're going to put some lineaters up, and they're going to put signs out there. There won't be none of this detour traffic through there, it'll be local traffic only, and the state's going to post that out there, so that nobody else can get through there but the present traffic at the present time. If you're thinking you're going to have an increase in it, that's one question. If you think that the, the speed limit ought to be lowered now, just the way it is all the time, that's another question.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about forty mile an hour on the Creek Road, when the state has thirty-five mile an hour down in the Cove and Perdix. And like I said, there's, there's people that walk along there, ride their bicycles, and I don't know what the distance is that you have to give a bicycle anymore, but if you, what, three feet, four feet?
Four.
Four feet, you give that guy on a bicycle four feet, and you're on one of those curves, and somebody's coming around there forty mile an hour, there's a problem. I just, the use will increase, I, whether it's going to be documented or not, I don't know. But just for the safety of the people along there, I, just asking for some consideration on that.
I know when Al was here, he done road studies on that road out there and said it didn't warrant anything any lower, so it wasn't lowered. You can take the machine out there, and you can do another road study if you want, but there has to be a study done in order to verify that the speed limit can be lowered. Yes, you just can't go out and lower.
Oh, I understand that. And so we have a good bit of time before that project starts. So could you do it? Have you planned to do it?
We're looking, we're looking into that also, also gambling.
Great.
I don't know if you noticed that.
Thanks.
Yes, yes, great, that's, that answered my question. Thank you.
Well, we're trying to get.
And the statement, they looked at doing the bridge too, that they looked at if it can't be lowered permanently, that it may be able to be lowered during this, during the rebuilding, that temporarily reduces the.
Thanks.
Yes, yes, great. That's, that answered my question. Thank you.
What we're trying to do. In the statement, they looked at doing the bridge too, that they looked at if it can't be lowered permanently, that it may be able to be lowered during this, during the rebuilding, that temporarily reduces the.
There's some young man jogs along there pushing a kid in a stroller and good Lord.
I remember years ago, just as civil circumstances, nothing beleaguered, they paved schoolhouse roads, which was terrible from there. Speed limit was in, township dropped down to 30, 35 mile an hour up through there, posted the sign. State people complained about, state come along and made us raise it. That was a.
Okay, if you're considering, that's great, thank you.
But we're considering that.
Great.
Okay. I mean, that's what you get it to. Maybe I will drop it down temporarily, we'll see how it goes after that.
Well, yeah, I just don't wanna see somebody.
Okay.
Okay, Stanley?
Yeah, this is for Officer Pickles. What warrants an officer to leave the township to another township in or county?
Um, I don't know what you mean. I mean, obviously if they're gonna.
For an auto accident.
It depends if they call for assistance or.
Okay.
Or anything.
There was an accident on an 812 at 719 up in Reed Township, up at the eastbound ramp onto 1115 North. Clearly not in our area and also dispatch had told him it was in Dawson County Reed Township. And apparently your officer chose to walk in, see what was going on that night.
Yeah. I don't recall when, when was that recently or?
812, 13.
Oh, 812.
At 719.
We can look into it.
It was Perry 1188, I believe.
That's 719 Stanley.
Pardon?
719.
812.
812. No, I meant the time.
719, correct.
I'll look into it, yeah. A lot of times when we had the fire over there too, I know our officer would go over and help out in the beginning until other officers were on, but.
You can go listen to the, the dispatch, it was interesting.
Oh, right, yeah.
It was interesting, Helen, why you got there.
Thank you.
All from a handshake, it's interesting. Didn't make any sense to me. Another one for you, I guess. I know last year, you guys sitting in the middle of the highway down 1115, you know the school zone. Last year that sort of became a running joke. This year, when school went to start, I was shot, a couple people said to me, why don't you run and sit down in the center lane again? People felt it was a traffic hazard. So apparently today, this morning, I got a phone call from a certain citizen that said that the black unmarked SUV was sitting down by Leonard, facing northbound in the center lane, no lights, no headlights, no emergency lights and no four ways, in the fog. And I mean, I seen a couple, I traveled 15 very little. I did see it last year a couple times, didn't make any sense to me, but I'm not a police officer, I don't, don't run, don't run the police thing, but somebody called me today and they said they couldn't believe they were just sitting here in the center like that.
Yeah, we have a lot of complaints, people passing school buses, passing cars at a high rate of speed up the center lane and that's why we sit down there. And we put lines at the beginning of both ends of that and we'll either shit coming north or coming south.
There's people pass the whole way down through there, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
Sitting here with no lights on at all, I mean.
No, no emergency lights, no, no.
You got your headlights on, there's no headlights, no four ways.
Usually, I usually leave my foot on the brake anyway, but when I'd sit down there. Yeah, we timed vehicles and gotten quite a few vehicles. It's a, it's a $500 fine and three month suspension on your driver's license if you're going 16 miles an hour now. So, you know, it's, you know. And it's, and it's dangerous when the bus is coming out and stuff like that, so yeah, there's not really too much, too many other places to sit and it's, and it's, and it's good. People are, people see the vehicle, the police vehicle and they, and they know to slow down. They see it ahead of time.
But like I said, just, you know, to me, if you're sitting in the middle of the highway, especially in the fall, because in this time of year, we get a lot of fall, you would think it has some kind of lights out there, even four, I put my four ways on, I'm pulling up to a flagman out there, I'll put my four ways on so the people behind me know that, you know, we're slowing down. Just made no sense to me last year, nor did it make sense when I got the phone call this morning, so.
Well, they saw us.
Mm-hmm.
And that's that unmarked vehicle, but now you.
Yeah, they keep it in the garage.
But I'll look into that one too, this morning.
Uh, one other thing, Henry, at the comp meeting, you made statements about the mountain down there and you had told me that that wasn't personal.
What's that?
You had told me that wasn't personal.
What's that?
About changing the, the mountain from medium green to dark green.
I'd never sat in one of those meetings, never offered anything by golly for any comment, and so I wouldn't know where or how you would figure it'd be personal or you have to explain yourself there Stanley, where it'd be personal.
Well, that's what you said to me there tonight.
That.
At the comp meeting, this past comp meeting.
That what?
It's not personal, the changes.
No, it's not.
Okay. I, I thought that's what you said.
Yeah. It's not.
I thought about that after you said it, I got digging around. I don't know if that makes it personal or not, but it is definitely very interesting.
Mm-hmm.
And that was done, I think, 2009 and the map was redone 2010.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong in the date, I don't know.
Okay. And I can tell you that I didn't authorize that sign to be put up and I wasn't very happy about it.
I know, I don't know anything about that, I have the saying.
Let me tell you.
You know, if you said that, then just the wheels started.
Okay. You will find that at the present time, when I was dealing with that down there, I made the statement many a time, that if that subdivision plan comes before me and meets all the requirements of this township, I'm bound by law to sign it and I would. I explained that by golly to developers and everybody down there. There was a coalition, there was a group, Cove Mountain people that wanted to preserve that down there and they had the right to do the same thing. As a supervisor, I had to sit there independent Stanley. And if they'd have met the requirements, I left them all on my land to survey, never chased nobody off, helped them out, showed them where boundary corners were and everything else. Never did I ever show any animosity towards any of those people that came up in there. Many of them walked across my place without asking, put flags up through there, wetland signs just come up across and put them right up my stream, right above my house, right up by my spring, they had no business being there. Never said nothing, just left them go, they just walked over and done what they'd done. Never did I ever take issue with any one of those people that come in there. I took them back to Valley Father and made friends with them back there with the neighbors so that they didn't need to walk over the wheat field side to come down to the mountain to get to the property to even survey. And took them back in my place and allowed them to be in there so that they could get up in there and survey the rest of that 1155. So there was nothing personal about that in there. If there's anything to save anything in a mountain, I'd like to preserve my own mountain ground because it's pristine, has been cut for 150 years and I'd like to see it preserved. There's something there to be had that shouldn't be destroyed. So that sign was there, I didn't ask for it, I didn't put it there and I objected to it. And that was somebody else's opinion that they had at that time, okay? But I can assure you, if it comes back tomorrow and they meet the requirements of the township and the plan comes up and it's recommended by the Butcher Call, my signature will go on that plan. I don't sit here by golly stopping anybody with plans, having out here with Ward, I've worked with those people, written anybody out here, they have the right to do that. When a plan comes before you and meets requirements of the township, I'm bound by law to sign it. I've never refused to sign any of them that came up here and met the requirements, never.
What came up in the comp meeting was that that being changed on the map itself from the medium green to the dark green was to be forest conservation.
Okay. And as they done that down there, Stanley, I do know that there was an awful lot of look, took at that up in there, they took, if you were taking a look at that, there were so much wetlands up in there that they could never get the yield of the houses. I've set through them with those plans, never opposed them, but I listened to everything they had. They done, that mountain there is a mountain that's so full of water up in there. They can never get the yield plan for the amount of houses that they had up in there or they wanted to put up in there because of that. And the wetland flags were all over the mountain down through there and they could not get the yield of development up in there. Everybody thinks we run them away, no, they withdrew their, their plan. And their plan, I told them right, I'll tell you and tell everybody else, that if they developed it and they had 200 houses, writing down along my line, right next to me in the farm, I had to live with it. They had the right to do that. When the plan come before me, I would sign it. I had no choice. Their property, not mine. Done nothing to keep them out and I felt that I got, done nothing by golly for them to sue me for my farm. And the Allenburgers, it was not just things they done. Cost me an awful lot of money.
Anything about that?
No, I don't.
They asked me about that, to be honest with you.
I think everybody knows a little bit about.
I don't, to be honest with you.
So that's my answer to that, how that got there, I didn't know it was going up and I don't think it stayed through the campaign either.
No.
Yeah, no. Did not. Did not. The thing was there very briefly. Anything else Stanley?
Yep, that did for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's just a shame that the person that took that picture isn't here tonight. I know when that was taken.
Okay. Anything else, Suzette?
Roy Crick.
Waiting for a few more issues.
Okay. Kara? Char's gone, Lee. Lee, your turn. Okay, that's all.
Okay, invoices expenditures before you. And before you invoice the expenditures. I don't think Helen has anything by golly to offer anything special on it other than what's on the paperwork there. If I here, I make a motion that we approve those invoices expenditures.
I'll second that.
Motion made, but second, all those favored to consent, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. You have the treasures report?
Before that, we have a CD for the parking wreck. That's due for renewal on 9/8. You have the numbers. Right now it's at Marysville Bank and they have the best rate right now for, at point two.
I'm making motion to keep it at Marysville.
Second motion.
Okay, motion is second, all those favored to consent, saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no other comment, I make a motion that we approve the treasure report subject to audit.
I'll second that.
Motion made, but second, all those favored to consent, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Minutes for July 31st, 2013.
Brian gave me his.
Mm-hmm.
His comments, changes, all that.
So I hear a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, all those favored to consent, saying aye.
I'll second.
A second, excuse me. Second, all those favored to consent, saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Highway report, have a few things here to say. We've got the culvert down in Sawmill, the drainage ditch on the north side, we finally concreted that, smoothed that out, rolled that back and finally for the first time in many years, I've had a lot of people come by and says when it rains, we don't have the stones out on the road so firmly. And they're very appreciative of that, but it took a lot of hard work with Tom and us down there on our knees, trying and concreteing and to roll that back to get it that water does flow and drain and on the other side. Everybody's been asking me, what's the little dam on the other side? Well, we put a dam in there and we're gonna put a larger pipe in it, we used it as a coffer dam to pump the water around while we excavated the, the culvert, put a new pipe in, so we had dry working area in there. We left the dam in there and we found out in the heavy rains and whatnot, it sure has served as a big erosion control thing in there. And so I believe I'm gonna leave it there because downstream, to down that stream so bad, comes in the corner and has a tendency to clog that pipe up in the past, although the concrete head wall we poured in there, I think will take care of that, let's hope. But we're gonna try it, see if it stays. It's a no big labor thing and it's all set and done there. We have that to do and then we're out of there. It's a problem that was, been ongoing for many, many years. We've done an awful lot of road repairs and schoolhouse, we've been in and out down there between other things when we get calls. We cleared the grass one more time at the guardrails, gambers, brushed at King's Mels, trimmed that around there, up around Patsy Fisher's place, up around the sharp bend up there. Trying to keep our site distances open in all places and faculty halls are never sold for site distances and we trimmed the back. If you take notice of grass and the bank out here, township building was growing up pretty bad, we've been busy, we had a rainy day, the boys worked in the rain and got that stuff almost down. Butcher Shop has been tarred and chipped. That went fairly well. They got here a little bit late, but we got the double tarred and chipped out there. There was a lot of comments thanking us for it and a few that it wasn't needed, we wasted the money, but it will seal that road before it gets broke up and give you another eight, 10 years out with a very low cost. We were out there today, we took all the mailbox pull offs, we fixed them up, we tarred and chipped them, made them decent, joined them to the road to make them look nice and the people's driveways out there, we joined them again today when we were out there. And Tom, we got them all done, did we not?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so everybody seemed to be happy with what we did on the finishing of it out there. Removed a tree off of Schoolhouse Road down there this morning, fell down over the communication lines, I went down, Tom was tied up, went down with the backhoe, fire company was there, they sold it up, I went down with the backhoe, lifted it off the wires, got the wires freed up. Lumber's still laying there. And that was one that we often looked at, said it's going to come down and get the lines, but it's on private property. And yet they're on private property and you can't get in to get them, but you know they're gonna take the lines down. Now, some people have really worked with us, the Allenburgers coming up Sawmill, laid up this, taken an awful lot down, they were pushing the wire down, were leaning on the line, the wire was the only thing holding the trees up. We got some more down along there, I've talked to some private landowners and it's no detriment to us if they're three and four and five foot off the road, but they're leaning hard towards the lines. And so I'm gonna take the effort to keep the lines from getting broke as much as we can and have them called out in a storm and take those down. So I expect to hear somewhere, what are you doing on private property, cutting trees down? Well, we have the complaints or we have the people that want the big oak tree down 1115 that's in there leaning out over, Pendott won't do nothing with it.
No, they didn't.
Did they, did they take that down?
No, they took the top out of it.
That old dead one?
So the tree can still fall down and kill a motorist, but at least the top one.
I didn't, I didn't know that they were done, didn't see that. But that was down there. And we have another one on Schoolhouse, a big one up there that's leaning over, you know, and that one's beyond our means to tend to or I would take that one down. But everybody in some of these have been very, very cooperative with us and we're trying to take those down if they're not time consuming and they're not any thing that we see that we're gonna do property damage or whatnot, but it may save you being called out in the storms, taking these wires down. I don't know how many have taken off down that way and from King Cora back to the Cove Church on the game commissioner side. I just cannot believe the amount of trees that fell across the power lines and put us out of service for a while. We did have one of our construction crew out there, when he was up, it was, and I took the dump truck up and tried to guide wire out there, took the pole down a little bit, put some people out of power, but they were quick to restore it and everything was okay. That, that goes with them. We are going to start working on the side ditches, there's some much needed repairs out here and the ditch is on gambers across from Morrison down along there, been there for years and now in time to fix it. We've spent this year fixing up infrastructure mainly in the township and we haven't got to all of it. There are just so many things that hasn't been taken care of, we're trying to catch up with them. And road repair in general in here coming into the fall, we got salt in, we're expecting more salt in out here and making sure that we're prepared for the winter. And it will be soon time to start putting stone plows in trucks. We did get our hydraulic pump back that went bad on the truck and got it on, everything's working fine with that. And that's all I have to, we're offering as far as from the highway crew. And once again, as always, I'd like to thank Tom and Steve for putting some very hot nails out there. They're always there and they do a good job even in the heat out there. So that's all I have underneath the highway report.
Henry?
Yes?
Do you still think you're gonna get to school, to Sawmill?
What's that? That, you know. Well, I tell you John, as you see the yellow, you see the Butcher Calls out across the road out there, you see all the orange markers on the road out there? Well, drive out that road every day, there's all kinds of orange markers out there that, that center lanes come in, that come in and measure that road and they're in the process, they're gonna bury the fiber optics that's coming up in there. So they've been working on that all summer, they can't make up their mind whether they're gonna hang it on the poles or what they're gonna do. Now they're gonna sew it underground. And as long as that option was there, there was no way that I was gonna widen the road and put blacktop in along the edge and have them come along and tear it right back up. So they're gonna be putting that fiber optics, I talked to the guy today, he called me and said that they're gonna be putting that fiber optics within the township line from the church back, they're gonna bury it. Everybody thinks they're gonna put poles in the way they got marked, but no, the plans are, I'll be meeting with them next week because they have to get permits, they're gonna be, they're gonna be getting Ford's driveway and some people's driveways out there and Towneville Road. I wanna make sure that those people are protected, that we have a contract and an easement with them when they get the permits, that they replace them for them.[1795.73] So that's it, they're gonna rip, they'll be coming across Alder Drive there again, and they'll be digging that up to put this fiber optics in there. So instead of putting it back in the field where they have these, but now for the underground copper fund lines, they're gonna bring this out and put it within the township right away. The other lines that are sewed in there are back on private property. This time, they're gonna stay on the township road.
Did they give any indication of when they're gonna be about?
They would like to have that fiber optics back into that cell tower and have it in operation by the end of the year. So they've been, they've been billy-dallying around all summer. I mean, this is two years now, the second year, last year they were in there, another outfit was gonna put it in, then they canceled it. Now they turned around and say the need's there for more telephone service, so they're gonna put the fiber optics in. So that's the reason why we haven't worked on that, they couldn't make up their mind where they're gonna put.
Point of personal thing, what happens, you know, after it gets on the holdman? Do you know what their intent is there?
Well, you know, if there's a big argument about that, there's no easement, they're no right away, you know, when it gets, when it comes into the farmhouse. Not issues yet to be resolved. And that's, that's an issue, that they created themselves some problems in the past when they come in, and this time, they're not walking all over Henry. I gotta see the agreement, it has to go before attorney to take a look at, not selling myself short this time, not that I'm asking for anything. But they're not gonna come in there with an open gate like they had before, John.
So we're, 'cause they approached, again, this is not a township, but they approached me that they were gonna be hanging it on the PPNL poles, so that's not the option?
Well, you know, it's strange that they telling me that they don't have permission, or they don't have a contract to put it on the PPNL poles, so they're gonna sew it underground. But then when they come in to get to where the PPNL pole was there, at the corner pole of the house that goes up to your place, then they tell me they're gonna hang it on the poles. They gotta make up their mind what they got and what they don't have. Nevertheless, they can't come to your place without your say-so or my say-so. They just don't have it. I got burned once, they can allow neighbors to get burned again.
Thanks for the insight, I wasn't aware of what was going on.
Well, that's, that's what the story is. So I'm not out to hold them up, or I'm not to keep them from doing it, I'm just trying to protect myself. I would not sign a contract to have, they can run fiber cables to go anywhere, do whatever they want in culvert, manholes, all over the place. No way that that's gonna happen. They can get to it, I'm not keeping them from that. So not yet to be resolved, John, it will be, the fiber optics will be in there. I'm meeting with them again Wednesday. But I also have to make sure township protected the residents, the stuff that they're coming in there and digging through their driveways. And make sure that they get fair treatment also.
Well, does this help you with the township project then? In other words, if they're gonna have to go trenching through there, or are they gonna, are they going to do it with trenchless boring?
No, they're not, they're gonna, they'll come through, most of those places there, they sew it in with a piece of equipment.
Oh, they just pull it with the dozer?
Pardon? Oh, I thought you said that, they sew it, John, they sewed it in one time in there, and they didn't get it deep enough with the regular phone lines, and I dug it up with the plow. Then they come in and sewed it in again. That time, they put it down deep enough. And that's what they're, I think they're planning on doing, putting the fiber optics in, they're not gonna border or anything, but they are gonna, they're gonna tear side the road up there some.
No, I thought if they were trenching, that they would, that they would then help you, then you know, part of that would help you with stabilizing the base course through.
The thing of it is, they got, they got overcome it with the pipeline, yet the pipeline's very fussy what they do going across there. And I also wanna make sure that they're gonna put this thing back off to the side far enough, so we can widen that road if we're not over top of it. That's, that's where we're at. And that, that has to be settled yet, and the guy said he'll be down, probably Tuesday or Wednesday, we'll be out there walking that down. I'm gonna see what they propose. That has to be, has to be marked, that has to be somewhere that we know where they're going, what they're gonna do, that they don't, don't encroach on somebody else or whatnot. They got a little difficulty there with the pipeline. But it's all being worked out, they've been working on this for quite a while, a little slow at it. Okay. And Township Planning Commission, Sam Smith Land Development Plan, time extension?
Yes, until November twenty seventh. They need extra time to do that PennDOT HOP.
I make a motion that we grant the time extension. Okay, motion made with second, although the favor of consent was saying aye.
Lee had a question.
Have it so ordered.
Where's that at?
That's Holdelman's. The second part of Sam Smith is, there's a township acknowledgement and comment letter that has to go to PennDOT. Planning Commission had no comments to add to the response letter. I just need your permission to send it.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant Helen permission to send the letter. Okay, motion made with second, although the favor of consent was saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Once again, we have the Warden Properties Stone Mills Estates Subdivision Land Development Plan, asking for another time extension.
Till October thirtieth.
Till October the thirtieth. Maybe some days that will happen every year. Maybe. What's that? You might be retired, I can't believe.
I will accept the time extension.
I'll, go ahead. Okay, motion made with second, although the favor of consent was saying aye.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
On that letter from the Planning Commission, I see that the municipal authority does not copy on that letter.
No, so do they, they need to be copied on it?
I think it would be a good idea, because there, you'll see in my report that there are some meetings going on there, and that may be useful information for them.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, we have the zoning report, not much there in front of you?
Not much on the zoning report itself, but we do have a conditional use hearing request. So we need to set a date for that. Time limit is October eighteenth, so we have to have it before then. October eighteenth.
October eighteenth. Is it something you wanna try to do before, before a meeting?
That's fine, too.
Oh, yeah.
Let's try for that Helen.
So September twenty fifth?
Yes, we just like another date, okay?
Okay. No problem.
Is that gonna be like at six thirty?
Yeah, like, let's try for six o'clock max. I know, six thirty's running.
No problem.
Storage enforcement law officer report, Helen?
Yeah, no activities. And then you have a renewal of the holding tank for Mr. Kelly, the Red Barn. And he did renew his escrow.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant that renewal. Motion made with second, although the favor of consent was saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
That's all.
And Township Park and Rec Board Report, Karen?
I have nothing to say.
And Township Municipal Authority.
My report is before you, if you have any questions, ask me.
Okay. You have an appointment for on the board of the authority. The authority had come to me several months ago and said they asked to look around, and look around, and I said I would do that, that I would take it into consideration, and sure, I have a recommendation from them. Heard nothing, nothing's been moving, et cetera. And the strange, maybe it may seem to some people, years ago, I took a gentleman off the board. It was all because of the controversy off of, of the Perdix thing down here with no grants, and the high costs that we're being faced with and whatnot. There had to be a change down there before that got out of hand, because I had sat with too many meetings down and, and with PennDOT and et cetera, just to give you a little, I mean, not with PennDOT, but with Pennvest and DEP, and our sort of rates were headed for twelve hundred dollars a month or worse. I mean, a year, over a hundred dollars. And we were close to being there, we'd lucky to get stopped at eight forty. Lee's well aware of that, I'll never forget, I can't stop giving Lee thanks for all the work that we done during the time, by golly, to get that thing turned around. And Lee was a big input on that, we spent an awful lot of time on that getting it turned around. But in lieu of that, I thought when I brought all that attention to the authority, that they would take a look and say, look, we can't do this, we can't afford it. And, but they still wanted the project, so I voted for it. And so we got that project down there, but we're still continuing with an awful bad situation, ill feeling with the borough, or the things that I felt weren't. And today, we've got our loan paid off, we're fixing up the infrastructure. The authority is a lot healthier now than it was when we were back then. And I thought, you know, there's one person on there, then I'm gonna go sit down and see if I can be a peacemaker and talk to him, because there is an important project coming up, there's grant money and whatnot coming, and that's a water system in Sunshine Hills. There's no fire protection up there, there's a big project coming up there, there's gonna be monies for it. And I see that the authority's taking their way, they're moving forward to correct that situation up there, finally get a water system in there. There'll be a water system, if it injures them, now's the time to do it. They will be able to sell water to the development, and he'll have to, have to use on, it'll be a big, big, big user for him, it'll be a big help to him. Plus, you'll get, you'll get better water and better service up there, and there's other areas that they're gonna be serving to make that thing profitable. So I went up, and believe it or not, I knocked on Jim Coker's door, and I sat there for an hour and a half with Jim, and talked about all the problems and the disagreements we had in the past. And all listeners agreed to meet the problems that we had in the past, and they don't exist today, and I found him very, very, very happy that I came back and I sat there, but he didn't commit himself until today. And one of it was, he had a grandson, he got his hand in a sweeper, he got chewed up pretty bad, and he had to go up to New York for a while with him to the hospital, and said the boy's hand's gonna, effectively get full recovery. But he called me back today, and I, I, not today, but yesterday, and I thanked him for that, that he's willing to go on. I think that in lieu of, everything that's gonna take place up there, Jim can be a benefit, he had eight years there before. I think he's gonna take an awful lot of flack, people don't wanna see their roads dug up, they don't wanna see their yards dug up, and I think he'd be an asset to that project up there. And I gave that every consideration, and put everything in the past behind, and I asked Jim Coker. I would ask the board by golly at this time, since we haven't had anybody submitted to us from the, from the authority, or on the board, that, that we entertain the thought, and I'll make the motion myself, that we put point Jim Coker, for the term on the municipal authority, once again. I'll make that formal motion, do I hear a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, motion's made with a second, although the favor of consent was saying aye. Ayes have it, and so ordered. I would, I, I think that it'll work out. Okay, like I said, I, yes, chap.
I might understand that the water company is gonna be hooked on to the Warden Property then?
I didn't say that, I said the possibility of it is, they could sell water to them. I mean, with the tower, they'll have the reservoir, and they'll have the diaphragmy up there to do that.
According to the ordinances too, if there is a water source available, a public water source, they must connect to that, not drill individual wells.
Right, two years ago, the authority came to me, and we weren't interested in, since two thousand and six, that's when the Warden Property that undercame to us, went across the property, you know, for sewer and all that, weren't interested. As a matter of fact, my wife told him to leave, the engineer, and get off the property, no interest. Two years ago, Chisholm and Sam Ox came and says, we got a problem there, DEP's on us, we gotta do something about this water company. Because the way it is now, the chlorine is into the water, but it's not in there long enough until it goes out to the homes. So he says, what we wanna do is run the line over and hook on to the Warden Property. To do that, they had to cross my property, which I didn't wanna do, but they said, well, keep it along the property line between myself and Jerry Johnson, thirty-foot easement, we're there, make a turn, you know, so we're gonna hook it on that way, and you're gonna save the township quarter of a million dollars, which they would spend putting up a tank. So we said, well, okay, if the township needs it, you're gonna save money, we'll give them the easement, which we did. And then, two years, that's two years ago, this year, I asked Chisholm about it, he said, well, that's pretty much dead. What gives?
Well, the thing of it was, the developer come back, chap, if, excuse me calling you chap. The developer come back and said that after he was up there, that he wasn't gonna spend the money and put the water tower up and everything, he was gonna drill individual wells, and left us hanging out. Now, at one time, we granted them a time extension with the promise that by the next time that time extension was up, they would come back with agreement and have agreement on sewer and everything else. And they come back, time extension run out, they never made a motion, and they never made a move to get an agreement, they never worked with the authority, and we keep granting these people these extensions. And so meanwhile, if those tanks go bad up there, you people are without water. And you got a van set up up there, I'm sure you're familiar with it. One of these days, you're gonna lose them, and they're gonna have the worst mess that you ever saw up there. And the authority has to do something, and they gotta move ahead, and they best better would do that. The, the interconnection by golly to Duncan Water Supply that was offered years ago was shot down by the authority at that time. There should've been an interconnection, which they were willing to give us to tie into you people, in case those tanks went bad. But that never materialized, and so that was something that should've happened, but then, nevertheless, to make a long story short, I don't know what they're doing, other than the developer says, we're not gonna put it in, we're gonna drill individual wells. And that was after you had granted the right of way also. So if he's gonna drill individual wells, you may as well exercise the option that you got and put the tower up, and make it cheaper and derive the revenues off of that, because by our ordinance, they have to hook on to our water supply anyhow. But they were gonna put it in, and they were gonna contribute, and to meet these, this forest system that they got out here, yes, we're, we're, they gotta do something up there. So they're doing the best that they can, and I'm not on the authority, and I don't get the meaning, but I do try to follow a little bit what's going on. You can see at any extent of the time with the developers here, what the extensions are being granted for. One of those extensions was for them to come back with agreement, and they never done it, never, never made a motion, moved to it, did they, Cece?
They did have an agreement last year, almost a year ago. And then things changed, their plans changed, and that all went out the window.
All went out the window. They said, yes, here we have an agreement, they showed the plan, then they turned around, come back, and showed plans with all individual wells. For whatever reason, I don't know, they keep changing, they keep changing up there to keep the plan alive, that's why it's going over eight years. That's as much as I can tell you, go to the Planning Commission, I mean, go to the municipal authority and see what else you can find out, chap. You guys do need a water system up there, terrible.
Last month at the municipal authority meeting, the same gentleman who was here at our meeting last month from Alpha was at our meeting, the municipal authority meeting.
I was there.
Okay. The municipal authority set up like an ad hoc committee of several people to meet with the people from Alpha, and also the two engineers, one from each side, to sit down and try to come up with some kind of an agreement, some plan that will work. So I, I don't know when they're meeting, I'm not part of that group, but next Wednesday night, I would encourage you to come to municipal authority meeting to get some answers to that.
I spoke with Mr. Yngs today, and he said they did have a meeting with the Planning Commission, and apparently, he said that went pretty well. And he also had a meeting later today with the authority.
Okay, well, that's it.
I'm sort of in the middle there, you know, I granted them two easements for water and also for sewer, you know, and he says, well, he's, I'm gonna see what's gonna happen here, so.
We had, like I said, we had a written agreement with them, and then last year, they just kind of pulled the rug out, and that is all, is worthless. and that is all, is worthless. It, nothing is as that agreement says.
Well, I'm looking at this with a John DeStine, because I spent three years here with a, a simple sewer connection, which I was supposed to get, and I, it was between the borough and the township. And I just, that's why I don't come to meetings. You know, they just, I get frustrated.
Understood.
And finally, I just went and sold the property and says, "You know, you, you deal with it. I'm tired of it." I think he's getting about the same, in the same position. Okay, I didn't answer my question. Thank you.
Nothing else under the municipal authority secretary's report?
Okay, first thing I have is the treasurer's applications. Helen, you might wanna make that announcement. We didn't make it yet.
Yes, okay, and I did, and I apologize, Helen. You got it written on the top of the list. I forgot to announce. Oh, where did I put it out here?
Executive sessions.
Yeah, I'm looking for the dates. I got it set in here somewhere. I got two different...
Eight thirteen and fifteen.
We have two executive sessions on...
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen and fifteen. I wrote that down here for the purpose of interviewing for treasurer.
Treasurer.
And also for the UCC code inspectors that were, that were gonna, looks, we're gonna have to change since Glace has gone out of business. So I forgot to announce that we had those two meetings here for those interviews, and we still have one to get done with the UCC that hasn't been able to make it.
Correct.
So that's an ongoing thing until he gets a timeframe. So that being said, yes, we had those executive sessions on that date, those two dates. At this time, you know, you have the treasurer's application. I was unavailable for the one meeting for the treasurers. And Cece and Brian done the report, done that interview that night. So that's before us at the present time for applications to bring somebody in to fulfill the treasurer's.
I didn't put the applications in if you're looking for them.
That's what I was looking for. I didn't know the name.
The top one, it was the second applicant.
Oh, yeah, which one did you guys select?
I think it was the second one.
Yeah.
I'll give, I'll give those to you two.
Well, we made no decision that night, but of the two, I would say that the top, my opinion, the top applicant shown here met the qualifications. They, they were both good candidates, but I think this top person here in line would require less training, would be a little better suited for the job. That was my personal opinion.
I would agree with Cece, and she also has more experience directly related with the accounting table of the two candidates.
Okay. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so over. Do I hear a motion to the House?
I move, we offer the position to Julie Shoemaker Harvey.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
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 Just one question, at the same rate as Christine's pay rate?
Yes.
Okay, Helen, fall cleanup package?
You only received one, uh, one bid, was from Sylvester's. Is there, I did the comparison. If we had the same quality, and it would actually come in a little less. Not a whole lot, but a little.
Okay.
So, that's all we have.
Looking at that proposal, it's not too much difference to last year, but there is a couple dollars difference in the way they show it. It is on the less side.
Yeah.
Since only receiving one proposal, not seeing any difference, they've done a good job in the past. I make a motion that we proceed for a fall cleanup with Sylvester.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so over.
Okay, next is copier quotes for the township. You have them all there. The one that came in from Chris Zeppona? I don't know how to say his name right. There's not all the information we have yet. I got this yesterday.
Okay.
So, tell me what you wanna do.
We can let them along here till we, till we see where we're at there, Helen, in regards to that proposal. See if we have all the information in regards to that.
So we table until next month.
Okay, I like to table that, so we get those things we need on that.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can't see the traffic light bill?
Yes, it's starting. With the HOP for the traffic light at 274 and Business Campus, we get to take over the traffic light. And part of that is in a new electric bill. We have to sign that we will take responsibility for this electric service. Don't know how much that's gonna be yet.
Do we have any idea what they typically run?
The streetlights, let me see here. Our streetlight bill is not too bad. Just gotta find the... Will still be PP and L, but it'll give us an idea, 'cause those streetlights go on and off with the, sorry.
I can't, go ahead, Sam.
Is that gonna be an LED?
Yes, it's supposed to be.
I imagine it's gonna be a big user, you know. Might be more in the control box. It'll be a label, I think.
The reason I'm asking that, with budget preparation coming up, I mean, that's something we need to consider too.
We need to consider, yes.
So we need some kind of a ballpark figure.
Garage, uh, streetlights are $129.39 a month. That's pretty standard, 'cause that's out of PP and L.
I suggest you call Marysville and ask them what their...
Marysville's not paying for it.
Who is?
Yngst. They have another couple of years. That Yngst pays for it.
Really?
And then they'll take it over in a couple of years.
But the tax, the bill would still come to them.
Would it? I could do that.
Stand his leg.
I pay for the streetlight. I don't care, but I won't pay you for the traffic. I don't want no lighter anyhow.
Traffic signal on 11 and 15 is still becoming in the borough's name.
Okay.
So the bill would probably still be coming possibly through the borough and then going to A's. Because they have to have the contract with PP and L.
Okay.
Same as you, no matter who pays it. I mean, I can call some other people, find out what they're paying.
Yeah, I could call Marysville tomorrow. Yeah, I also gotta get the contract for repair. We gotta do that, too.
Henry, I had a question on the traffic signal. I had talked to Paul, who's not here tonight, and Helen, about the optocom system, or I think it's what's, what's the system called?
Green?
Yeah, the emergency vehicles have a, have a device on them, basically, the strobe. Yeah, and I didn't know, and Paul didn't know, and Helen didn't know, if it was included in the project, that whoever, whoever's putting in the system, Pendot or whoever's, whoever's putting in, if that system was included, that it would be ready for that if and when the time that the emergency vehicles would put that on. You know, we would just have to put it on our emergency vehicle.
You guys have been into that more than I have.
That question was asked, unfortunately, and nobody took care of it, I guess, two years ago, getting around there. Same question about it today.
I thought, I thought it's supposed to be, we can check it out.
I just remember coming up and meeting.
Well, they did.
Exactly the same thing. You remember it better than mine. We did look at the plan, and there was language for it in there.
Yes.
Question is, what's in?
Yeah, it wasn't clear cut, what's in it, what's included, if there's gonna be, you know, if, if we're included in it, that, that we get, you know, we don't know any, we haven't found out any information. I had placed calls to Pendot. She gave me that number, and I really didn't, they didn't know.
Do you have, do you have preemption capability currently on your...
We don't have, no, we didn't have. The reason to have...
Right, red light on that.
It'd be something we'd have. Yeah, it'd be something we'd have to add.
Karen Kerr is, is it...
I'd call the people that're gonna install it. She got the...
I have, I was having a card.
Yeah, she has it right there.
Phone call, and those installed, tell me real quick.
And then the question to ask is whether the devices for our apparatus would be included. Or they allow so many, or we just tell them how many vehicles we needed on, and, you know, or, and, and, or if there's a cost to that, what it would be, and who we would get to install them.
I was suggesting call the...
Installer?
No, I'd call Penone.
Penone? Okay.
Ever seen it?
Yeah.
For Pendot.
Who's actually paying for it? That's federal grant, it's federal spending.
Yeah, that's through.
Run through, yeah, run through Perry County.
Do you have the name for, said Penone?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got all that.
And also, if it isn't, like Stanley said about it being a grant, if it is not, if it's included to put it in, but nothing's available for the apparatus, if, you know, if there's an add-on, if we could contact somebody and they could adjust it, or if there's excess money, you know, grants always have excess funds left over. I've dealt with that many a times in our grants, that they could add that on for us. And we would have seven vehicles that would need to put on.
You would need seven vehicles. How about the EMS?
They would at least have, they would probably have four, I would think. They have three ambulances in their QRS unit.
You wanna get new Bloomfield Maryville also?
I don't know. I'd have to check. Are they, their second call?
They fly through here a bit bit.
Well, also, the ALS would, ALS would definitely, they probably use it the most.
Yeah.
West shore ALS.
How about you guys?
I would think Maryville would have it, 'cause they have a signal.
Yeah, you'd think they would.
Yeah.
Yes, Buster. Craig asked that question about two years ago, whether preemption was included with the signal, and he was told, yes. Yes, Duncan EMS does have preemption equipment in their vehicles, and we won't need anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I was thinking of you, though. I was thinking of you.
Well, we hope it's there.
I can check with that. Yeah.
Remember, we asked the question that's supposed to be there. I can't verify it is there.
Are we gonna walk or sign him on being the traffic light bill, or find out what it's gonna be?
Well, they're not gonna, this is to say that we will take over their electric. That's all that is.
So we don't decide that tonight?
When's it gonna be operational?
October.
They said the end of October at the last project control meeting.
Yeah, but they can't, I don't think they can go forward with...
They're not gonna probably go forward and hook the electric up until that.
Until this is signed.
I make a motion that we accept that electric bill, intent paperwork, and put that form of motion right here, second. Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
That's all I mind. I'm gonna go turn on the electric.
Okay, I have before the engineers' report.
Hey, you should have a copy of my report. There's not a whole lot to update on it. There was the public hearing that we had some talk about, and I see it's later on the agenda, so, with a comprehensive plan. I guess I'd ask one question of you. On that signal, you probably have, looked for bids and proposals for the annual maintenance and...
That's what Helen was talking about, that we have to also...
Yes, okay. Let me get some, let me get some names, too.
I'll put that down.
Anything else, Brad?
Uh, no, unless you have questions.
Okay, now, if you have any questions, I'd like to, while Max is here, I'd like to offer ten comments on one thing that Max was involved with several years ago. Get a phone call, like so many out here, from a lady that has a problem with her road. It's a private road. And she's told by the landowner that he, the landowner, is not allowed on his own ground. But I signed a paper. He can't get on his ground. And I called the lady back. The individual claims up and down that he can't get on his ground because of me. In reality, the only person that's not allowed on the ground would be me, 'cause it's his private ground. But there's nothing there to keep that individual off. Yes, there was a court injunction filed against that individual by this township. And that was because in the middle of the night, and the rainstorms and et cetera, I was ended up going back to where Fermi has the mountain, and there was stuff back there three foot deep that the residents couldn't get in and out, that I had to scoop up off the road. All the culvert pipes are clogged up back there from that issue, and we've changed other things over the year. I got tired of going back there out of, out of that. We have township backhoe up here. I used my own a lot of times, and yet you had to do that. People called. They couldn't get out. There's three foot of mud or dirt and stuff on the road. So there was an injunction filed against Fermi that we went back to clean that up, that we can collect for it, or we're not correct backs. And I read the injunction. We have it here, and I have a copy of it for that lady. And I told her that I was glad to give her that, to show her that. Fermi can go up there. And ever since that injunction's been on, when the crap and stuff comes down over the mountain, he willingly cleans it up now. So the problem went away. But before, he just left it lay, and until we put enforcement on it, that we were tired of it, that we were gonna, because you just had to either take township hose on there and clean it up. There was a terrible mess, truckload of them. So there's nothing there because of the rumor and the words going around, keep Mr. Chris from going on his own property. He just don't have a development plan or anything else up there, Perry County Forest Conservation. He's not allowed to do any, any of the work up there, disturb anymore because of that. And it was something that's out there right now, that Fermi can't get on his ground. He has a paper that I signed, my signature says he can't go on. But I have met Mrs. Cotton. Her husband passed away. She still lives up there. And I told her that I will meet her, call her, and bring her to the bottom of that ground, 'cause I won't go up on ground from his property. But I'll give her a copy of that, so she can show it to him, 'cause she does have a terrible problem up there. If the fire company had to get to her house tomorrow, you couldn't get the fire engine up there. Her road's that bad.
Is it that rugged?
Huh?
Is it that rugged again?
Terrible, terrible. And so she's concerned about that, and Fermi doesn't wanna fix it. And, and nothing that we can do about it at the present time. But I just wanted to clarify that. But that's the only thing the injunction does, and that's what the injunction says. Helen and I pulled it up. It's here, and we've never charged him a penny since that went into effect, 'cause he keeps it cleaned up now. So just time for some rumors that's out there all over the place, that Henry can't, Fermi can't get to his property because of me. Engineers' report, police reports before you.
Nothing much to add. We had several nuisance properties, complaints in. We, we contacted the owners, and they've resolved the nuisances, except for one down on 15 in Hilltop. That had resulted in a citation. We did go to court on that, and he was ordered 30 days from the, it's all due.
Okay, nothing else. I need the police report. We have the permit report.
Nothing unusual. Just pools, sewer lines, and a trailer being moved in and out.
Correspondents?
Okay, first thing is from Whitbeck. They are announcing that they will no longer be using our facilities as of, as of October. They have built their own house with grant money, or office. That's all that letter says. The Perry County email is announcing the county hazard mitigation plans, public meetings. You have the Duncan Fire Company federal tax return for 2012. And the high school band boosters are inviting you to a dinner in honor of the concession stand. Helen has an RSVP. That's all the correspondence.
Okay, correspondence, old business, Helen?
Comp plan.
Okay, we had the public hearing for our comp plan. We have the comments right there. And we had left it, that if there's anything else that needs to be passed on, the planning commission. And so at the present time, I recommend we hold approval or rejection of this until next month to allow that to take place.
Do you wanna go back to the planning commission?
What's that?
Do you want the...
Well, that's the way we understood it, left it that night.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, 'cause of the way you said it.
And that's my, that's my request. Can't speak for the other two. I'll make that form of motion. I'll make that form of motion, yes. I'll second. Okay, motion with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it so ordered. Okay, grassroots growths information?
You have all the stuff that I found and that Mrs. Hilbisch found. Wefield and Watts Township do not have a grass regulation. Wright Township does, and theirs is in the packet. Mrs. Hilbisch wasn't, isn't, wasn't here tonight, but she has been saying that she is considering your offer of starting up the environmental, what is it, EAC, environmental something committee? That's all I have on that.
As I said last meeting, I've been down and visited, the neighbors got it down there, and asked them if they could be able to consider it. I really didn't see anything, no vermin, police were down to take a look at it or whatnot. You get neighbors that can't get along, I think that may be some of it, I'm not sure. But there is high grass there, and I respect what she's trying to do, although I can tell you, an ordinance in the township, every time I drive around and take a look at the ordinance that reflected that, it's gonna be a very difficult thing in Penn Township. Very difficult. I don't know how you, how you do it, they tried it once before. I'm unwilling to listen to her. I stopped in twice today, yesterday and today, and those people were not home. I asked them if there isn't a chance that they would consider, by golly, cutting that grass down there, to make everybody happy, two neighbors happy, if one would just yield a little bit. So, although now I can't do anything, 'cause there isn't anything, if this was in the borough or whatnot, we have house against house, there's an ordinance there to have to keep that from. But I take a look at, last thing I wanna do is, is see, and we're just come out here that falls all over Penn Township, and Stanley up here is the first one that gets hit, by golly, have to keep a grass boat out there where the garden is. First thing I thought of was the Business Campus. I, I, I mean, if it's gonna affect one, it's gonna affect all. It is really a difficult thing, by golly, in rural Penn Township, where people have that. And so, I, I feel her pain, and it's, I stopped there and talked to her about it. I will try again, talk to the neighbors there, to see if they won't, won't work with, with it, you know. I can't make them or can't force them, but I can ask them, and I will do that again. Okay, that's all I have on it. Old business, anything else? If not, new business.
I have a question, Henry.
Yes, Jody.
I heard Mr. Warner mentioned Paul...
Saltis.
What's his status? I thought he resigned.
What's that?
I heard Mr. Warner mentioned Paul Saltis.
Paul Saltis said that he would stand in there as needed, you know, until, he said he, he resigned, yes. And I had talked to Paul, and Paul said that any time we needed him, that he would be glad to help in and fall in, you know, and, and take a look at that. I've talked to a lawful lot of people about it. I've got some people in mind, by golly, that I would like to see maybe take it, but it is still sitting out there. There's no civil defense director, except Paul Saltis at the present time.
So, is that who's registered with the state still?
Yes.
This is his second resignation he's tendered, right?
Yes, okay.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I stay in touch with him, Jody, to make sure that he's still saying that he's willing to do what was called upon, yes.
Thank you.
New business?
None.
Nothing, only new business. Hearing nothing, I make a motion reiterate. Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it so ordered.